Good morning, everyone. I'm Lisa Bender. I'm the President of the Minneapolis City Council. Welcome to City Hall today. Often before our official business, we commemorate and honor important moments in our city, and I want to turn this over to Councilmember Kano to read a resolution commemorating Latino Heritage Month. Thank you, Councilmember Kano.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. And I'm going to ask the Latino leaders who have shown up today to please come up. Nuria, please, if you can join us. Leyda in the Somos Group, Ruby, Letitia. I thought I saw Ruby here a little bit ago. Okay, beautiful. Jennifer, if you can please join me up here. This is televised for the community, so I'm glad everyone looks very nice. And then we'll read this together and invite a few folks to make some comments. Hola, Silvia. Please, come on up. Anybody else that wants to join us, please? Mariano, Michelle, can you please come up here as Latino staff leaders? Thank you. Alrighty, so this is our resolution commemorating Latino Heritage Month. So from September 15th to October 15th, the United States celebrates Latino Heritage Month. September 15th marks the anniversary of independence for several Latin American countries, including Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, with Mexico commemorating its independence on September 16th and Chile on September 18th. Latino Heritage Month is a time to learn about both the resiliency of this vibrant American community and the oppression it has survived in acts of colonization, state-sanctioned lynchings, and forcibly removable. And whereas the United States is home to 58.9 million Latinos, making it the largest ethnic and racial community in the country, and whereas there are more than 44,000 Latinos who live in Minneapolis, who have helped to keep our schools open, who bring rich arts and cultural practices to our city, and who have revitalized important commercial corridors like Lake Street, Nicolet, and Central Avenue. And whereas out of the city's total workforce, only 4% are Latinos, Latino Heritage Month presents us with a call to action to increase the number of Latino employees at the city in order to reach our racial equity goals. And whereas the city of Minneapolis established Somos, the Latino Employee Resource Group to recruit, retain, and promote more Latino employees at the city, and whereas this month allows us to reflect on the future of our city and the significant role that Latino residents will play in growing Minneapolis and the contributions that Latinos have had and will have on our city's innovation, cultural assets, and identity, and whereas we acknowledge the deep hardships the Latino community is facing, most recently displayed through the mass shooting in El Paso, Texas, which specifically targeted Latino families and promoted white supremacy. And whereas we stand in solidarity with the victims and the survivors of the El Paso hate crime, and we stand in solidarity with the millions of undocumented immigrant families whose infants and children have been torn away from the care and love of their parents, unjustly and inhumanly incarcerated in concentration camps on the southern border, and we soundly reject these acts of persecution and the ideologies of hate and fear, and we assert that we will welcome, embrace, and are proud of our Latino community. And whereas honoring Latino Heritage Month is one way we can show our commitment to work toward positive change, to stop the hate, discrimination, and oppression of the Latino community. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the city council do hereby commemorate Latino Heritage Month in order to protect and uplift the voice, the vision, and the contributions brought forward by Latinos throughout Minneapolis, the United States, and the world. And now I would like to please ask some of our leaders to share some words with us today. I will start by handing the microphone to Nuria Rivera Vandermeide, who is our city coordinator, our city's first Latina city coordinator, and then if we can just share the microphone with a few other leaders today.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Kano. And first and foremost, I want to thank you. You have been a champion and a leader in city council and have used your voice and your position to really uplift Latinos in the city, and for that, I just thank you personally, but I know that many of our city employees as well, thank you for bringing those efforts forward, as well as those in community. And then finally, I just want to thank the entire council and mayor for really supporting the Somos ERG. Somos ERG, they're amazing, a group of employees who got together and said, "We can do better. We can recruit. We can have more numbers." At 4% of the employee workforce, we can do better. And they have banded to see how they can be leveraged, how they can help, not a criticism, but rather a mechanism of support, and to augment Latinos here in the city. And they have just been stellar and amazing. Everyone here has been terrific. So just wanted to thank you, council, for supporting the Somos ERG as that moves forward.
Somos, just say a couple of words, please. Make a difference. Hola a todos. Thanks so much for the opportunity. It's hard to follow the words and the clauses from the resolution. This means a lot to us today. Somos has been created last year, and in such a little time, the team has come together as a family, and that's how we consider ourselves. We're brothers and sisters working together. Why? Because we want to bring the voice of the Latino community to this building, to the decisions that are made, thinking about our community, our needs, our challenges. And we see those not only as gaps or obstacles, we see them as a huge opportunity, and we want to help the city accomplishing something big for our community. And I want to thank each member of Somos. We could not have done all of this work if it wasn't for each one of us working hard and bringing the passion, because we are passionate about our city. We love the city of Minneapolis, and our community wants to belong to this city. This opportunity to celebrate Latino Heritage Month is huge for us, because this is the first time that the city is coming together as an organization and telling the community, "We're here for you. Let's work together." Thank you.
I'm going to have Ruby Lee just give us a couple of remarks. She is one of the leaders of, she is actually the leader, of Clues, which is the largest Latino-serving nonprofit in the state. And so we're honored that you're here to join us, and if you wouldn't mind sharing a couple of words.
Well, first of all, thank you so much, Councilmember Kano, all council members, Andrea, who I know, and mayor, and also Somos and all the staff of the city of Minneapolis. As you know, we have over 300,000 Latinos in the state. Alondra said 44,000 in the city of Minneapolis per se, but in the West Metro certainly, the Latino community is quite large. It is critical that we allow space and time and support for our community to lift their narratives, for our young people to tell their stories, to be part of the community, to feel engaged and to feel part of a community. So the city making these statements is a great opportunity for us to come together as Latinos and non-Latinos, to work together toward prosperity, wellness for our community, for our city. And as Clues, we also do our part by having an office right here on Lake Street in Minneapolis, because it's important that we make a statement and that we provide more opportunities, more engagement, and more access. So this type of recognition and special time for us to celebrate our culture, our heritage, our traditions is part of what makes us strong as a community, what empowers us as a community that is here to, you know, many who were born and raised in Minneapolis, but also many new immigrants and new Americans that come to make this their home. So thank you all, community as well, for engaging us and being part of it, and thank you for your leadership, Alondra, because it really is a great demonstration of what one of us can do, but together, what we all can do.
Thank you. And I see so many powerful mujeres here, and I wanted to just ask Jennifer if she could help us close it off. Jennifer Godinez is the Associate Director of the Minnesota Education Equity Partnership and has been such a strong leader in the Twin Cities for many, many years, mentored a lot of youth, and she was actually probably the youngest-serving Latino executive director when she founded La Escuelita, which was part of El Colegio Charter School. So if you can please help us share some words.
I already have an idea here, so part B. When I'm done, when I'm done, when I'm done, when I'm done. But I want to say one quick comment. As an educator, I just want to say that all what we're doing today is showing children of all backgrounds what it really looks like to have a multiracial city. So I really honor Mayor Jacob Frye, all the council members, especially Alondra as the first Latina in the history of Minneapolis to serve on the city council. And I helped with her campaign. And the night when we were waiting, just like Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez, you saw in the news, they were all waiting to see if she'd be elected, I thought about my abuelito and what he said, which is that "We didn't just come to this country to take anything from it. We came to this country to build it." So please teach your children that today, that we are all here, whatever background, whatever sexual orientation, whoever we are, to help co-build this country. Thank you.
And we are going to close with, can everybody say, "Viva?" Viva! Viva Minneapolis! Viva our diversity! Viva our diversity! Y vivamos los Latinos. Viva!
Thank you all so much. Appreciate you all so much. I hope many of you can stay here for the panel at noon, where we will talk about increasing the number of Latino employees at the city. And check out our city website, which has a series of events that we've co-hosted and organized with the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department, Somos, and many other folks at the city. So muchas gracias por estar aquí, y adelante. Thank you. Did you say it with a name or how does that happen? I think there's just me and Andrea, and then we're going to turn it over to the other side.
Thank you so much, and thank you to Councilmember Kano for her fierce leadership on behalf of the community. Our next resolution is one that honors our outgoing city coordinator, Nuria Rivera Vandermeide. So I'll have her and council vice president join me. So I'm going to jump in and read the resolution, because this is very emotional, I think, for a lot of us. And then we will all say a few words. This is a resolution honoring Nuria Rivera Vandermeide for her service to the city of Minneapolis. Whereas Nuria Rivera Vandermeide has dedicated over six years of full-time service to the city and people of Minneapolis, and during her tenure, she has served as the Director of Regulatory Services, the Deputy City Coordinator, and currently the City Coordinator. And whereas Ms. Rivera Vandermeide's legacy shows her enduring commitment to the public and employee good, moving policy and procedures forward which advance the good of the city. And whereas Ms. Rivera Vandermeide led the city through a number of visionary policy reforms, both internal and external, and improved the lives of residents and city staff. And whereas through her work as Director of Regulatory Services, Ms. Rivera Vandermeide provided consistent and thoughtful leadership by establishing solid departmental infrastructure, the utilization of data to drive the department's work, and developing innovative processes that continue to this day to protect and better serve the residents of Minneapolis. And through her work as a Deputy City Coordinator, Ms. Rivera Vandermeide reinforced and expanded the collaborative nature and trust between the coordinator's office and the city council, oversaw the foundational development of policies that advanced the city's commitment to economic development and fiscal protections for historically marginalized communities and the most vulnerable people in our city. And whereas through her work as a city coordinator, Ms. Rivera Vandermeide built on her work as deputy in creating cross-functional and multi-jurisdictional collaboration, leading the city safely through multiple major events, supporting and leading staff across 10 departments and in her office, as well as playing a lead role in responding to a homeless encampment and safe transitions for the city's homeless and unsheltered. And whereas Ms. Rivera Vandermeide was instrumental in measures and actions to progress the city's diverse spend and workforce diversity, especially in building and maintaining the city's first employee resource groups to provide identity-based support for city staff, as well as leading as the executive sponsor for women and Somos. And whereas Ms. Rivera Vandermeide brought to her colleagues and friends an orientation toward performance-driven work, an ability to make change even when difficult, a keen sense of humor, a love of family, friends, and food, and a consistent declaration of her data geekiness. And whereas Ms. Rivera Vandermeide's public service contributions to the staff and people of Minneapolis will be deeply missed. And whereas the people of Austin, Texas, are fortunate beyond compare to gain the passion and expertise of Ms. Rivera Vandermeide, we may forgive them someday, but we may not. Therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the city council do hereby commend Nuria Rivera Vandermeide for her dedication and exemplary service to the city of Minneapolis, presented with deep gratitude and appreciation by the mayor and council members for her outstanding commitment to the city, that the mayor and city council congratulate Nuria Rivera Vandermeide for her many significant accomplishments and wish her much happiness and fulfillment, but not too much, because we want her to come back in her role as Deputy City Manager in Austin, Texas. Thank you, Nuria. I'm just going to say a couple of things and then turn it over to council vice president, who chairs our committee of the whole and our race equity committee that the coordinator reports to. I just want to add as a personal note that Nuria is special and stands out among the thousands of amazing staff, which is the highest compliment we can give, because I think we have the best staff in the country here at the city of Minneapolis. Nuria brings a personal passion to her work that is unparalleled, and there is no crazy idea for Nuria. And we know that some of you call us crazy. We know. And you know what we do? We send Nuria down. Because you know what? In order to solve the problems that are facing our community, to take on structural inequality and centuries of white supremacy and racism, we have to stop dismissing ideas that are structurally profound as crazy, and we need to embrace the idea that our future can be different. And Nuria has led us to that in so many ways, and has left us with a legacy of change that will bring that forward even after she goes. And so it is so meaningful to me personally, the support that you have given to the city council, the most diverse council we've ever had in our city's history. It matters to all of us, and we appreciate you. We love you. We'll miss you. Thank you.
Well, I'm not sure if I can fully express my gratitude for you. What a bittersweet day as we celebrate Latino Heritage Month, and one of our leading Latina voices, I think, in the country is leaving our city, and it's really sad. I was here when Nuria first came to the city of Minneapolis as the Regulatory Services Director and really transformed that department. And then you brought your leadership skills to the coordinator's office as the Assistant Director, and then you took over the coordinator's role and just have, as council president said, been leading us through so many transformative policy changes like $15 minimum wage, like wage protection, like Section 8 reforms. And so it's just been an incredible opportunity to work with you on such groundbreaking policies that really helped to address some of the deepest issues in our community. And I've been fortunate and honored to be a part of this strategic racial equity plan that you and your team, your staff have helped to bring to the city of Minneapolis, and I think that it's going to result in some really amazing, positive opportunities for the residents of the city of Minneapolis. And just thank you so much for your service to the city. And I want to invite my colleagues to share any thoughts that they may have about Nuria and this really sad occasion that she's leaving us on. Happy for her, sad for us. Thank you so much.
Want to start with the mayor, and then if anyone wants, just like go in order, and if you want. This is kind of leadership.
Thank you. When I first appointed Nuria to the position as city coordinator, I knew that it was an historic moment in that she would be the first Latina city coordinator, a person who is very much leading and managing so many initiatives throughout our city. But I have to share with you the very first conversation that I had with her after I decided to appoint her. I sat down with her, and the first thing that she said was, "I first need to be certain that you are not appointing me because I would be the first Latina city coordinator." And that is so emblematic of who Nuria is. She wanted to be appointed because she was the best person for the job, and she was. She wanted to be appointed because she could do transformational work in the city, and she did. She wanted to be appointed because she could have this profound impact on the residents of the city of Minneapolis, and they will feel that impact every single day. We love you. We're going to miss you. But I can't think of a better person to have led us the last couple of years.
I can't help but jump in and say a positive word or two. I am a little bit cranky at Spencer down in Austin for snatching you up. Austin is a great city. I have some, we have some colleagues down in Austin who are amazing, and I've spoken my slight dissatisfaction that they snatched you up, but again, it's so bittersweet, because you are incredibly powerful, and that city will greatly benefit. They have a large population, they have a very strong city manager office, and so you'll be able to really flex in ways that I think will benefit that city greatly. Your leadership has been felt throughout this whole enterprise and out in the community as well, between sick and safe time, minimum wage, other things that folks have already brought up. But the work that you have done has deeply shifted systemic changes that are needed in the city. And so thank you for your leadership. Thank you for managing the politics of trying to make that systemic change. You've done so with grace and with thoughtfulness. So we're sad to lose you, but happy for Austin and happy for you.
I just wanted to add just one thing that no one's mentioned yet, which is, I think that it can be easy to sort of fake professionalism or those kinds of things, but it's hard to fake bringing up leadership, right? And when the people underneath you, like Danielle, like Mark, are great leaders themselves, that's a reflection of your leadership. And I think I just wanted to recognize that it's not just your service, but the service of your team and the people that you've brought forward to be excellent stewards of the city, I think is a genuine reflection, and it means that the way that you showed up to work and the way that you showed up to serve the city was real. And I just want to thank you for that leadership.
This role is so important. We do our best work when we take on big challenges that can't be contained in one department, and having someone who can get the whole city enterprise working together on the big stuff like race equity, on the big stuff like homelessness, on the big stuff like public safety in its broadest sense, I think, has been just so critical, and you've been so good at it, and it's such a challenging thing to do. But I think having someone who's in that role, thinking about how to get departments working together, how to help everybody see the ways that we're aligned and can move together, and then putting in place structural improvements to the way we make decisions, the way we think about data, that are going to benefit our city for years and years and years to come. I know that we're going to be glad that you served in this role for a long time after you left. I was in Austin for a conference last month, and I made Spencer apologize to me in person. But I really, really wish you all the best, and I'm just so grateful for all the ways that we're going to continue to enjoy the product of your work for a long time to come in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. And I've had the pleasure of knowing Nuria in a capacity of friendship before her tenure here at City Hall, and of course, I treasure that, and I know even though you're going to be in Austin, you won't be a stranger on a personal level. But we've touched on your importance in the work that you've done in a position that really a lot of people still don't understand what it is. What is a city coordinator in the city of Minneapolis, where you have this broad distributive way of getting things done and making decisions? You do not have that authority to just say, "This is going to happen, and this is when it's going to happen." However, in that sort of nuanced position that you have created, and if there ever was to be a blueprint for the city coordinator, and I've worked with several in my tenure here, and I think Goodman's even worked with more, and each one had their own approach, but if there were to be a blueprint, you've made the blueprint. I really, truly believe that. I don't know if that can be accomplished, because it's more than just how you did it, it was you that did it. It was the personal touch that you had. Politics is a lot driven by the personality that you bring to it, and you brought an sublime personality of care. I really believe that. It was care. And you're an extraordinary problem solver. And as council president alluded to, we were very generous in providing you problems to solve. So good luck, and see you around.
Te vamos a extrañar mucho. We're going to miss you a lot. It was really beautiful to be around your mentorship, your support, your vision, always so energetic, engaged, and deeply committed. And I saw you firsthand turn all of those racial equity words that we have on reports and paper into actual tangible changes in the institution, and we are forever grateful for that. That is a big, big legacy here that you're leaving in Minneapolis. So we're not going to let you go so fast, though. We're going to stay in touch. And I look at your growth and your, you know, being lifted up in leadership into a bigger city with more Latino community members and perhaps more challenges as a way to really expand our familia and to stay in touch with you and lean on each other across cities and states to say, "How are we doing? How can we do better? What support can we lend each other?" So we're going to be extending our hands and our arms long across into Texas to stay in touch with you. And you know that Minnesota will always be a home for you as long as the many of us are here to embrace you and welcome you and continue to do this amazing work that we've all signed up to do together. Gracias, Nuria.
Well, I'm really grateful for all that you gave to the city. I think you came at an important time when we were trying to make some transition, and I think you've shown all of us that you can do this work and be a leader in this work and still be authentic and be yourself and be spontaneous. In fact, then you're better at that work. So I really appreciated kind of that integrity that you bring to this. I also think you came at a time, particularly with Reg Services, when we were trying to change government. It's really easy to be powerful and intimidating in our positions and as a city government or as a city coordinator or a council, and I think you helped us find the way to make the Department of Reg Services more caring and compassionate and service-oriented, and also the city government do that as well. From the way you worked and helped us work with the people throughout the city, but also with the staff, and think about how can we be more compassionate, more egalitarian, more empowering with one another here, and I think it was really helpful. I think we're going to, of course, miss you terribly, but hopefully we can hold on to some of those things. And I just want to highlight an example that people could think about, that your leadership really helped us do when we had to deal with the encampment, the well-forgotten natives and the navigation center. There was a time when we would have come in there with tanks and riot gear and cleaned the whole mess up, but you were able to help us, because we were saying, "We don't want to do that with this problem right now," and you were able to step in and take that on, and I'm deeply grateful, and I think the fact that you were able to help us do that really made a difference to the lives of those individuals who went through that too. too, and helped show a new way that we can help solve our problems and work together with compassion and authenticity at its core. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Noria, for your service to the city of Minneapolis, and congratulations and best of luck in your new endeavors.
Thank you.
Say some words?
Yeah. Just a... I'll be quick because there's business to attend to, and this is my worst nightmare, frankly. I would much rather take on any crazy challenge than have these lovely and kind words directed my way. But I want to thank you, first of all, because it is through those challenges that I think we have done better as a city, and it is not a singular individual, but it is the vision of mayors, it is visions of council, and I really thank you, Mayor, for this opportunity. I thank the council and Council President for your leadership as that has moved forward, really supporting the work that we've really all been trying to do together. I want to say that we have two amazing assets here in the city, and one of them is your staff, and you know I've been a champion of staff efforts since I started here. Staff is amazing and are really trying to work with you to change the way that we as a city provide service. And your second amazing asset is the community, and I know that we sometimes struggle on how to let community voice in and how to help that change our policies, and we have really dug in and said, "We welcome every voice here." And so, I am proudest of the legacies that impact those that perhaps have not had a voice in the city of Minneapolis, and will take that with me as I move forward. So, thank you for the opportunity and the support, and I'll let Spencer know that he's not to turn his face back here again for a while. I already told him. Thank you all.
Thank you so much, Noria.
Thank you.
With that, I will call this regular meeting of the City Council for September 13th to order. I'm Lisa Bender, I'm the president of the City Council, and I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilor Palmasano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Conno.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Fletcher.
Here.
Jenkins.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Cunningham.
Present.
Ellison.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Johnson is absent. President Bender.
Here.
There are 12 members present.
Thank you. I'd like to note that Councilmember Johnson is absent today because he is representing the city at the annual meeting of the League of Minnesota Cities where he represents the city of Minneapolis. We do have a quorum today, and I will note that the agenda for today's meeting is before us. Are there any amendments from councilmembers to the agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That carries, and the agenda is adopted. Next, we have the minutes from our August 23 meeting for acceptance. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That carries, and those minutes are adopted. Finally, we have the referrals of petitions, communications, and reports to proper committees. May I have a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. That carries, and those referrals are made. The next order of business is reports from our standing committees, and we begin with the report of the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee presented by the Chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Good morning, Madam President. The Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing nine items forward for approval this morning. Item number one is a bond issuance. Items two and three are liquor license approvals. Item four are the regular liquor license approvals, and five are the renewals. Item six are the gambling license approvals, and seven are the renewals. Item number eight are business license operating conditions for a business at 2940 area, and item number nine is some contract amendments with eligible providers in our employment and training services. With that, I'll move items one through nine for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilor Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins. Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes and no nays.
That carries, and that agenda is adopted. Next, we have the report from the Elections and Rules Committee presented by the Chair, Councilmember Ellison.
The Elections and Rules Committee has one item to bring forward. It's the passage of a resolution designating and prescribing polling places together with election precincts and the boundaries thereof, inclusive of two new precincts in wards three and 10 in the city of Minneapolis, and I will move approval.
Councilmember Ellison has moved the Elections and Rules Committee. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilor Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes and no nays.
That carries, and that agenda is adopted. Next, we have a report from the Housing Policy and Development Committee given by the Chair, Councilmember Gordon.
The Housing Policy and Development Committee will be bringing forward seven items for consideration today. The first three are land sales, all in North Minneapolis. The fourth one is submitting comments on our consolidated annual performance evaluation report. The fifth item is recommending passage of the ordinance as amended in committee for the rental protections. Sixth item is a resolution granting approval for Hennepin County's to undertake a project at Parkview Apartments and use housing revenue bonds, and the seventh is similar use of county revenue bonds for a project known as Homes Greenway Apartments. I will move items one through four, and six and seven, and I would like to pull item five for possible amendments and discussion.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the committee report, pulling item five. Is there any discussion on the other items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes and no nays.
Those items carry. Next is item five. I'll turn it back over to Councilmember Gordon, and then Councilmember Ellison, the lead author of the ordinance, is in queue as well.
And I know that we at least have one amendment before us related to this, and there may be another one coming, so I'll defer to Councilmember Ellison to take it from here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. I have three amendments. As you all know, in committee, we had a lengthy public hearing and have a few amendments related to the feedback that we got at that public hearing. The first one is adding a sentence to the definition of single-month rent. The sentence that we would be adding would be, "When a tenant's rent is supplemented by a rental subsidy," rent means the total contract rent for the dwelling unit, not the amount that the person receiving the subsidy is paying. So, I just wanted to add that sentence, and so that's the first amendment. Should we go one by one, or should I just kind of...
I think they're writing.
Yes. Hold on a sec. I think my... Hold on a sec. It should have been passed out, but maybe they did not get passed out.
Here they come.
Okay, cool.
So, the clerk's office is passing out the more technical amendments that Councilmember Ellison is describing. Councilmember Ellison, why don't you just describe them all as that happens, and then we can...
Sounds good.
...either take them up individually or together as we go on.
Okay. The second amendment is related to the ten-year lookback for the criminal provision, and so there is a... So, we're adding a few things to the ten-year lookback. We got a lot of feedback about a state law that has to do with employment, and it's called the Koskinen Law, and so I'll just sort of read what the change is. So, add all felony-level crimes that are listed in the state Koskinen Law with presumptive prison commitments longer than seven years. The four that we would be adding that fit that description would be first, second, and third-degree murder, would be first-degree manslaughter, kidnapping, and first-degree criminal conduct, including the two that are not included in the federal lifetime registry. So, that would be the... So, that would be the second motion. And then, the third is actually a staff direction that would have the group specified, and Councilmember Goodman's amendment from committee, would have that group further examine the ten-year lookback period, just because we have data to support the three in the seven-year lookback period. The ten-year lookback period is not predicated on the same data, but the points that I described, and so I really want that group to examine the ten-year lookback and make sure that we've considered everything when it comes to that. So, those are the three, and we can take them one by one or pass them as a whole if people don't have questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Ellison has moved the three motions, the two amendments, and a staff direction in front of us. I think I will take them one by one, as some may have more discussion than others. I put myself in queue, just I wanted to briefly... So, let's take this as amendment number one, but I'll comment and see if there are other comments on this item. This is the addition of "When a tenant's rent is supplemented by a rental subsidy," rent means the total contract rent for the dwelling unit amendment, under security deposit, which is item 244.2040. I do want to note that Councilmember Ellison and I have been working on this ordinance for over a year, and thank him for his leadership on many of the important details of the ordinance as the lead author. Throughout that year, we have been meeting in close conversation with the city attorney's office to make sure that our ordinance complies with state law, and so I want to just suggest that if councilmembers have amendments to bring further, that we make sure that those have been reviewed by the city attorney's office because of all of the careful work that has been done to bring this ordinance to us today. And I just want to note for my colleagues that I hope that you will take that very seriously as we move forward with discussing and potentially approving this ordinance that will likely need to be defended in courts, along with many of the other ordinances that are designed to help those who are most vulnerable in our community. So, with that, I'll see if there's any other discussion on item... Motion Amendment One under 244.2040. Any comments or questions or discussion? I don't see any. I will just take that as a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That motion carries and brings us back to the amendment... The ordinance is now amended. That brings us to item two, the motion to amend the criminal history portion of the proposed ordinance, which is under 244.2030C1 Criminal History. Councilmember Ellison described this. I will also put myself in queue here as the co-author. I do want to say that, you know, we had originally proposed the ordinance as recommended by staff to have three separate lookback periods for folks with criminal convictions, either three years, seven years, or 10 years, depending on the recommended sentencing related to each of those classifications. With further discussion from our city attorney's office, it's had been advised to us to either remove the ten-year lookback period entirely, which would be one option, or to do the motion as described by Councilmember Ellison. I want to say for the record that I would support removing the ten-year period altogether because of the feedback that I've heard from my constituents and folks in the community who are facing barriers to housing, but I support the amendment brought forward by Councilmember Ellison, which is the addition of additional criminal convictions to the list that will be a part of the ten-year history. I imagine there may be questions or comments about this as well, and maybe before I turn it over to Councilmember Goodman, who's in queue, I can note and see if Councilmember Ellison had anything further to say on this particular motion. Well, Councilmember Ellison, did you want to say anything more about this, and then Councilmember Goodman is in queue?
So, currently, I think our original intent with the ten-year lookback was to make sure that all of the felonies in it were from the listed Koskinen Law, state law, all of the crimes within the Koskinen Law that have a presumptive prison sentence longer than seven years. There was a little bit of oversight, and so we're simply adding the crimes that we missed into the ten-year lookback. So, just wanted to clarify that.
Councilmember Goodman.
Councilmember Ellison has clarified my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions or comments on the second amendment under criminal history? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilor Palmasano.
Aye.
Aye. Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes and no nays.
That carries, and that amendment has been adopted into the original ordinance. That brings us to the staff direction by Councilmember Ellison, as he described this as direct staff to examine the potential options and feasibility for a ten-year lookback period. So, we make sure that this is integrated into the work that was set up from a staff direction at committee, which will be a cross-sector implementation committee, which is set up specifically to monitor this particular ordinance, which we often do for policy change as well, just sort of codify that into this ordinance itself. Is there any comment or discussion on the staff direction? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That carries, and that staff direction is adopted. That brings us back to the ordinance, which has been now amended with the two amendments by Councilmember Ellison. Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to offer an amendment to the original ordinance proposal, and I just want to state that the intent of this amendment is to really help us sort of differentiate between smaller landlords versus large multinational corporations that are involved in our rental market, and I understand that there may be some consternation from our community and from our legal team. However, you know, I do want to just make sure that we are thinking about smaller landlords as part of the solution to our affordable housing crisis. So, the amendment that I'm offering is to exempt owner-occupied two-to-four-unit residential buildings from regulations related to the criminal background checks, i.e., lookbacks per HUD guidance, and also include a longer phase-in period of one year for buildings of 15 units or less.
Councilmember Jenkins has moved the amendment that is in front of us. Councilmember Ellison.
Just wanted to let my colleagues know that I'll be opposing this particular amendment for a few reasons. One, and I certainly totally have a lot of respect for Councilmember Jenkins, obviously, and have no problem with it being presented, but I will be opposing it. One of the main reasons is because in the lookback ordinance, there is an option for an individualized assessment, and while the individualized assessment might be cumbersome for landlords who are taking in a high volume of renters, for these smaller landlords who this is looking to address, I really think that the individualized assessment presents an opportunity for those landlords to get the kind of nuance that they're looking for, as well as have tenants with, you know, maybe rougher backgrounds to make their case for why they're not going to be... Why they'd be an asset in the building. And so, I think that the... And so I think that the individualized assessment sort of addresses these concerns. I know that there is a narrative that says that the individualized assessment would maybe leave someone legally susceptible, but it's also HUD recommendation. So I don't know how that narrative would make sense, given that HUD is the one recommending that more landlords engage in this process and engage in this tool, which is present in our ordinance. So I'll be opposing it because I feel like the ordinance does address the concerns laid out in this amendment.
Thank you. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. I just had two questions. The first is, I just wanted to clarify, was this vetted by the city attorney's office prior to being brought forward through the president?
Ms. Segal.
Madam Chair and Councilmember Cunningham, I know that some council members have brought forward this concern. I am not, Eric Nelson was the direct one involved. We have quickly done some drafting here, but, so I don't, I don't know about the particulars with these particular council members.
Okay. Thank you for that. So that's just a concern, perhaps maybe one of the authors of the amendment, if that's okay, Madam Chair, can help clarify whether or not this has been seen as legally defensible or not.
Madam Chair and Councilmember Cunningham.
Our city attorney would advise against.
Yeah, I'm going to advise against legal advice being publicly vetted because of attorney-client privilege.
Sure. So am I allowed, though, to ask whether or not the city attorney's office has been consulted?
Yes.
The answer is yes.
Yes, you can. And yes.
Thank you. And then the second thing is, I just wish that this had been brought forward as two separate motions, because they're two different topics within it. And so I wanted to see with the chair if it's possible for us to vote on these two amendments separately.
Yes, I'm happy to, so there's, I'll just take that as a motion to split the ordinance, which I suppose we should vote on. Do we need to vote on the motion to split, Madam Clerk? Yes, okay. So there is a motion in front of us by councilmember Cunningham to split this amendment into two pieces. Is there a second?
There is.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That carries. So we will take, then, I suppose we'll take the first item as described here. I do want to note that I think there may be some relationship between the two, so I'll just note that if councilmembers want to describe or discuss both of them, I think we can still take comment on both. Councilmember Gordon.
Madam Chair, can I interrupt just for a minute?
Thank you, Madam.
We have drafted two separate motions in actual ordinance-type language. I believe copies of that have been sent to council aides, and so we should be able to get copies of those printed and substitute that for what you have in front of you. I'm sorry, I thought that's what had already been passed out.
Thank you, Ms. Segal. No, we have something from the authors.
No, he, all right, hold on a second. I've got an email. Should I email it? Let me get it.
So while we're working out this sort of printing or distributing of amendment issues, we'll recognize councilmember Gordon.
Well, thank you very much. I was also interested in dividing the question. I'm much more open to considering a longer phase-in period, maybe for some of the smaller units than I am about an exemption. I think that would go counter to what we want to accomplish with the ordinance. We want to make sure that people have access to more housing and that it's fair access across the board and it's clear. So I'll be voting against the first section, but I'm interested, I guess, in hearing if other people have concerns about the longer phase-in period, because I'm certainly open to considering that.
Thank you. I have myself in queue, and so I'll just say a couple things. First, councilmember Ellison and I have had discussions with colleagues about the idea of extending a phase-in period for different scenarios, different types of housing. And I think both of us have been open to that as being a part of the ordinance, recognizing that while we have created a way for smaller landlords to comply with our ordinance through the alternative compliance mechanism, the individualized assessment option, which is in the ordinance itself, designed to address those concerns, knowing that folks, you know, with less capacity may need more time. So I have less concerns about that than a permanent exemption of particular kinds of housing. And I think because we have that safeguard in the ordinance, if you want to call it that, or that alternative way of complying with the ordinance, that that will cover and help folks who may be smaller landlords. You know, not all of our small landlords are in owner-occupied buildings. We have a lot of folks who may own just one duplex in the owner occupancy piece. I'm generally concerned about calling out owner-occupied home as different than renter-occupied home for a lot of reasons, but particularly in this case, because if the stated goal is to help smaller landlords, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't support a full exemption of all of our smaller units, because that would, that is housing to so many renters. And I also don't support singling out owner-occupied housing for an exemption. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, President Bender. I also have concerns about the amendment. I think I have had a lot of conversations with small landlords who have come to talk to me about this, many of whom who came in initially opposed, and when we talked about sort of how the individualized assessment would work and how they actually do their screenings, it turns out that this has a lot less impact on small landlords than what they, I think, had thought or feared that it would. And so I think rather than amend this, I would rather, we, you know, do more intentional outreach to help people understand the individualized assessment and use that tool. So I'll be putting no on the amendment.
Thank you. So I'll pause and see. I don't see anyone else in queue right now. I think we're waiting now for the materials coming from the city attorney's office. Oh, councilmember Wright, sorry, the low-tech version. Sorry about that.
Locked out, I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam President. You're just speaking to the second version with the longer phase, and I think it's a companion to the notion of further collaboration education, the notion that we do have the tailored route versus the prescribed route. I have, you know, operators who are still not sure what that is. And as I think councilmember Fletcher said, with that engagement, with that conversation, people are more willing to ease into and try this approach and understand the purposes underlying the ordinance that we have before us. And I think that process could definitely be well-served by more time and collaboration to that end, and thereby the intent behind it.
Thank you, councilmember Wright. And councilmember Wright's comments reminded me of, maybe to highlight for the folks who are not on the Housing Policy and Development Committee, we did have a number of amendments at committee, including some very specific language that is, again, embedded into the ordinance itself, which is a little unusual, that prescribes how we have created an expectation for staff to create this implementation committee, which will include departments like Regulatory Services and CPED working together to create materials that will serve as support resources for landlords. So that could look like, you know, more, certainly frequently asked questions, but even potentially model materials that landlords could use to comply with the individualized assessment piece or the other elements of the ordinance. So I think that will be, you know, I think the sentiment that's being described of supporting our smaller landlords through this is captured not only in the individualized assessment, but in the embedding in the ordinance itself, the intention to create these materials in the future. Okay. Is there any further discussion? So this will now be on the first motion, which is under section 244.2030F, item two, which is exempting dwelling units of four units or less when they, when the owner, when the person who owns or has an ownership interest in the dwelling units is residing in one of the dwelling units. Is there any further discussion on that amendment? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
No.
Conno.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Fletcher.
No.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
No.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
No.
Ellison.
No.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
No.
There are six ayes and six nays.
So the motion fails when it is not approved. So that amendment has not passed, has failed. That brings us to the second amendment, which is in front of us under section 22, sorry, excuse me, under section 244.2030I, under effective date. And it says, "The section shall become effective June 1, 2020 with the amendment, except for property with 15 dwelling units or less, for which the effective date shall be December 1, 2020." So that is the second amendment. I'll see if there is any discussion. I'll put myself in queue. I, you know, I have been open to an extended effective date. I'm a little concerned about the ability of our department to track 15 units or less. And I wish we had had more time to talk with the staff who have spent over a year in, I don't know how many meetings, with us talking about the details of those ordinance and how we, you know, how we're going to enforce it, how we're going to track it, how we're going to manage it, all of the things that are involved in implementing it. So not having had the chance to talk with them about implementation, I have a little hesitation, but, I mean, I certainly support the spirit of extending the time of the effective date for smaller property owners. We do have a lot of units within 15 dwelling units or less, I imagine, in our city, so this would extend the time for which renters across our city would be unprotected. So I probably won't support this amendment for those reasons, and probably would have been able to support something if there had been more time and discussion to talk with staff. Councilmember Ellison.
I was just going to echo that same sentiment. I am not opposed to having a longer implementation period, but for the reasons that the council president laid out, I won't be voting for this. But yeah, but with more time, I definitely would have, so. But yeah, I just don't know what it'll take, and if 15 is the right bar to set, just don't, just don't have those answers right now, so. I'll also be opposing.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm curious, the initial amendment had 25 units or less, and the one in front of us here says 15 units or less, so just to make sure that the intention is 15 units or less. I'm seeing a head nod, so I will presume so. I would speak in support of this motion of, I just would add that I'm not sure where we put that line. I agree with you, Council President, but I do and have heard from many landlords that are not owner-occupied kinds of units, but are a far cry away from large multinational corporations, who needs some more time to either get the individualized assessment piece going, or just need to figure out what these protections mean to them. And so I would support a longer phase-in time for that reason. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon.
I was also curious about the number. I think I'm generally supportive, this would just be six months for the smaller places to phase in, additional six months, so to me, it doesn't seem like it's a big deal, although I saw 25, now I'm seeing 15. We were talking about four units a little while ago. It would be interesting to get what the clarification is. I think usually when we talk about sizes and missing middles, I've heard six and 10 and 20, so I'm not, even if you don't give me any clarification, I'll probably still support the extension, but this might be an opportunity to give some clarification, or maybe we can land on a number that would get a unanimous vote here, I'm not sure, but I'll just put that out there. I'm even trying to think of how many are actually 15 units that I'm aware of, and it seems like a strange number to find in an apartment building that's just 15, not that there's necessarily a typical number, but, so, that's all I had to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. I support the underlying intention of this having an extended phase-in period. My concern is that, within my ward, there are multinational corporations that own hundreds of single-family homes, that are single-family units. And so I would be interested in potential, I would like to make an amendment in, well, I don't want to, I don't know, I would like for us to have a conversation about the potential of it being portfolio-based rather than unit-based. So for landlords that have portfolios of less than 15 units, rather than the dwelling itself having less than 15 minutes, units, because, again, I have over 200 units of single-family homes in my ward that's owned by one multinational corporation. And so within this framework that allows them to not be held accountable to these higher standards, and it puts pressure where it's, it's not alleviating pressure where it's needed. So I just want to put on the table for consideration of thinking about it being portfolio-based rather than unit-based.
Thank you. And I had myself in queue anyway, but I do have the information to respond to that question. Again, normally, we would, at committee, we would have been able to invite staff up to respond and ask these questions directly of staff, but having been in so many meetings about renter protections, I do know that actually we cannot track housing by LLC, so it's very difficult for us under our current regulatory framework, the way we've set up our licensing. While all units are licensed, we aren't able to track all of the units that an individual owner owns. And it is on the, I think, list of things to address through either policy change or administrative change in our renter-first policy, in the other direction that Regulatory Services has gotten from council. But today, we don't have the data to enforce an ordinance that would put, would consider a portfolio only a building. And I had myself in queue to comment that, like councilmember Cunningham's ward, in my ward, some of the most affordable rental housing is in smaller buildings, many of which are owned by large, the largest landlords in our city. And so if the intention, again, is to help these smaller landlords, I think the unintended consequence of this amendment is actually to leave the most vulnerable and lowest-income renters in our city out of the ordinance for a full six months longer. So I think councilmembers should weigh the intended purpose of the ordinance to benefit those, again, who are the most vulnerable, who are having the most trouble getting into housing. And then also, I just ask my colleagues to consider all of the other ways that we have worked to support landlords, address the concerns in the amendments and changes that have been made to the ordinance that is before you today, including the direction baked into the ordinance to develop resources that will help landlords comply, including the ability for a landlord to do essentially what they do today, which is, the smaller landlords, which is make an individualized assessment of each renter who's applying to live in their home. The only requirement there is that they comply with the Federal Fair Housing Act. I mean, we should be expecting landlords in Minneapolis to be complying with the Federal Fair Housing Act. I hope our landlords don't need another year to comply with federal law, which is designed to protect people who are our most vulnerable. So those are my thoughts and comments about that. Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Madam President. And I took to heart, councilmember Cunningham's observation, and take to heart the notion of how it would be hard to track. However, with an exemption, you can always sort of self-submit waiver form. So I would, in the spirit of the suggestion from councilmember Cunningham, have it read where it goes, except for property with 15, except for property owners with 15 dwelling units or less, and then devise a way in which people can submit that exemption and declare that they actually qualify. And without that affirmative action, we would just assume that they would not be able to get the extension.
Councilmember Wright has essentially made a substitute motion that adds that language that he just described. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would think that we're going to have to notify everyone with a rental license of what's going on, so we're going to send something to everybody. And so I like the affirmatively replying, if you own a number of buildings. I mean, there are some ladies who have been pretty public recently, that they have a couple of different scattered side houses, but under- couple of different scattered side houses, but under 15. And they'll get a license notice saying that this has to happen. Hopefully, it will include a list of what you can screen on, which is my big thing, like advance notice. We should be telling people how they can do it, rather than telling what they shouldn't do. And then they can self-select and ask for the extension if they feel they need it. So I think that we have a way to get at people who would have a concern about not being able to implement quickly through our rental licensing system.
Okay. Are there any further comments on the motion? Does the Clerk's office have what you need to know, what is before us?
Madam President, I would just clarify that if there's no objection from the body, Councilmember Reich's amendment would be included with Councilmember Jenkins' and Reich's motion, and then the body could vote on that.
Yes. Thank you. Sure. So I have Councilmember Fletcher in queue, and I request to read the motion as amended. Maybe I'll do that for, okay, perfect. So I'll try and see if I get this correct. If not, I welcome correction. So this would amend Section 244.2030i under effective date. The first sentence of that section would read, "This section shall become effective June 1, 2020, except for property owners with 15 dwelling units or less, for which the effective date shall be December 1, 2020." Okay. Thank you. All right. Do I have any other discussion on that motion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Connell.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
No.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Warszawny.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
No.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
No.
There are nine ayes and three nays.
All right, that amendment passes. So that brings us back to the underlying motion, which has now been amended with the three amendments that have passed, the first two from Councilor Ellison, and the second one just voted on and brought by Councilmembers Jenkins and Reich. Are there any other amendments or comments? Councilmember, do you have comments? Okay, perfect. I'll just pause and ask if there's any other amendments. Okay, perfect. Councilmember Ellison.
I just wanted to, you know, I know we're still pending a vote here, but I wanted to thank all my colleagues for at least showing interest in having conversations with me and us as the two authors for the last year, and keeping themselves in the loop, as much as we've tried to keep them in the loop. And also, even though I didn't support the two amendments brought by Councilmember Jenkins today, I really appreciate her interest and continued championship of landlords, both in her ward and around the city. And most importantly, I want to thank a lot of the renters and renter advocates who have been on the ground pushing for a lot of change in how we approach housing people in our city. But in particular, we're really the drivers for the ideas here in this ordinance, and other ideas that we weren't able to address in this ordinance. And so I want to thank always the boots on the ground, because these ideas and these protections don't just sort of pop up in the minds of councilmembers up here while we're sitting on the bench here. They really do come from the ground up, and I think that that's important for policy to be real, that it come from the ground up. So thank you all, and, you know, folks who are here and not here, for all the work that you've done. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I just want to say that I'm grateful for and strongly support the leadership of Councilmember Ellison on this work. I think that it's very much so needed. It's something that's also been reflected to me as a North Side Councilmember, the need for limited lookback. I would say that I do still have some unanswered questions that give me concern about this ordinance. So the first is, what is the data from cities that have implemented similar ordinances? How did landlords change their behavior, for better or worse? And did it actually increase housing accessibility to those who needed it most? But I want to be super clear that I strongly support the underlying intention of this ordinance. Even within my own family, two-thirds of my immediate family have multiple nonviolent felonies on their record, and so, and I've seen that negatively impact them. So I just want to first name that I support the underlying intention of this ordinance. But as a policymaker, I look at data with policies that have been implemented with similar underlying intentions, like Ban the Box, and see unintended consequences that have actually expanded the harm rather than reduce it. Again, as a child, I want to be clear that I watched my mother lose jobs after they ran a background criminal check, and then saw and felt the devastation of what that did to her and both our family. However, as a white woman, she is an example of the greatest beneficiaries of Ban the Box. What Brookings Institute found was that employers adapted their behaviors by increasing job criteria to require a college degree as a blanket way of weeding out potential acts offenders. The impact was decreasing employment opportunities overall for Black, Latinx, and Native job seekers, given our lower rates of college degree attainment. I bring this up because systemic and racial oppression adapts and reemerges in unexpected ways in the way that people behave. And so the concern that I have is a whack-a-mole problem. We hit it one place, and then it pops up in another. So what does that look like in this case? That hasn't been answered yet. We aren't the first city to pass this, pass an ordinance like this, but we are basing our ordinance on their models, not their results. And that is a concern that I have. If folks have additional information to answer these questions, I gladly welcome that now. But as a policymaker, without this information, I don't feel comfortable supporting this ordinance at this particular time. I would ask for my colleagues, though, to consider delaying this item for two cycles in order to convene the work group that was, as described in Councilmember Goodman's staff direction, to define metrics for the implementation of this ordinance. I think that's something that we really need to get in line prior to implementation, to be able to gather data of results from other cities, and then amend the ordinance to better get ahead of unintentional, unintended consequences. So I just, I would prefer to not vote against this ordinance because I support it. The concern that I have is when we look at similar underlying intentions, like Ban the Box, when we look at what ended up happening, is it caused greater harm to the folks who needed the support the most? And so when we write these sort of ordinances, I just want us to be as intentional as possible of getting ahead of potential adaptations in behavior, so that we can think about the various ways that systemic oppression will continue to show up by working around or through the ordinances and policies that us well-intended policymakers sometimes that we bring forward. So I don't want to necessarily, at this time, bring forward a motion, because I would like to hear if there, hear from my colleagues on that, a motion to delay, but I would like for folks to take that into consideration.
Thank you. I have myself in queue. I know we've had many conversations over the last couple of years, and even going back to 2016, when the innovation team first completed the study that showed of the 3,000 evictions that happen in Minneapolis every year, having dramatic and disproportionate impact in many Minneapolis neighborhoods. Through that study, we learned that in the two North Minneapolis zip codes, half of renters have an eviction filing on their record in the last three years. And we know from information, talking with folks in the court system, renter advocates and renters themselves, that having an eviction filing in a city with a 2% rental vacancy rate, with rents rising 17% in the last 10 years, was showing no stop, no sign of slowing down, that the most vulnerable renters in our community are basically found either with no housing at all, or in the most predatory housing in our city, where they are charged multiple deposits, fines, and fees, making it expensive and very out of reach for our working families to even get into housing, and where they are vulnerable to eviction for retaliation, even for things like not having the heat on in the winter. So we're left with a situation where a low-income renter in our city that has an eviction filing on their record, or bad credit from school loans, or a healthcare crisis, either can't get into housing, or is left being exploited by their landlord and threatened to even be able to stay in their home. We have a homelessness crisis. Homelessness rose 50% in just one year, and our neighbors are living on the streets because they don't have the protections that they need to get in to stay into affordable housing. This ordinance will not solve all of the problems that are facing low-income renters in our community. We are one of a handful of communities across the country that are applying this approach of fair-chance housing to in ordinance. So I don't believe that there is data available from the other cities that have presented this ordinance that show for a fact that an ordinance like this will meet the stated goals of the ordinance. But we do know that the status quo is not working for working families in our city. We have lots of evidence and data to show that renters in our community, low-income renters in our community, and renters of color are being exploited in our market. And this is one of the very least things we can do to help protect renters. And frankly, if my colleagues want to further strengthen our ability to protect renters, I think there's lots more we can do. We could pass an ordinance that says every single low-income renter in housing court has the right to counsel, like New York City has done, and Cleveland, Ohio is considering. I think our city should study rent increase caps, like the ones that have been proposed that were recently passed in Oregon and California, and are being proposed around the country. Because when we go to protect renters, landlords say, "We'll just increase the rent." But I don't think landlords in our city should be able to increase their rent by a completely unregulated amount at any time, forcing more renters onto the streets. So I hope that we do see this as a very small step forward for renters in our community, and I welcome the collaboration from so many councilmembers who are leading on this work now and into the future. Sometimes I forget him cheering.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I really want to be real clear. I absolutely support the spirit and intent of this ordinance change, and will be voting in favor of it. I concur with Councilmember Cunningham that the pernicious nature of racism and oppression is one of the most significant barriers to access to affordable housing for people in our community. I also would be remiss if I didn't state the obvious, that the real solution to this issue is the creation of more housing. That is, has not been stated enough, and I know that we all understand that that is a part of the solution, as well as looking at, I think, some of the more drastic measures that have been identified this morning, like rent caps and such. I do, however, believe that the most effective way is for us to continue to support landlords so that, because they are creating affordable housing for our communities, and continue to work with landlords who are responsible and continue. So that was the spirit of the amendments that I brought forward this morning. And with that being said, I do support this ordinance going forward.
Councilmember Ellison.
I just want to say, I wouldn't support a delay for a number of reasons, but I also just wanted to name that these, this ordinance is, exists within a body of work and doesn't exist on its own, right? We have advance notice of sale, which has a number of tenant protections embedded within it. We, last year in the budget, we upped our, the city's commitment to providing legal services for tenants in housing court up to half a million dollars. We've made changes internally with the Renter First policy to make sure that we are not just examining the structures, right, and condemning them, or, but that we're really prioritizing keeping tenants in place, exercising more TRAs. And so this work exists within a larger body of work, and is not supposed to execute on its own the heavy lift of making, stabilizing people in their housing. And so, and so I think that, I don't know that a delay would make sense. I also would say that this, this work, especially these look-back periods around the country, they are new policies, and I think that it's important to, I think it's important to be one of the leaders on a policy like this, to the Council President's point. We know that folks with eviction histories have trouble getting housed. Do we really need to delay, understand, you know, do we really need to delay this process? We also know that we have in our communities folks who have put felonies way behind, way behind them, right? Do we really need to delay before we start moving on the implementation of this policy? I don't think that we do. I think data is vitally important, but I also think that there are times where the problem is evident, and you don't have the data, and if you wait for it, you are, you're going to exacerbate the problem. That was true for coal mining regulation, that was true for the school-to-prison pipeline, I think it could be true here. I think that we've got to be a city that's leading on this policy, and so I wouldn't support a delay, and I do look forward to hopefully passing this day and getting in the room with the implementation team to make sure that we do roll this policy out thoroughly.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the spirit of giving advice, which I think is what Councilmember Cunningham had asked for, what is your opinion? I would also say at this point, it probably does not make sense to delay this action. And here's why. We put together an implementation team through an amendment that was made in committee, and that implementation team has been tasked with trying to work out some of the questions that have been raised. And Councilmember Cunningham legitimately raises questions with regard to data and outcomes, and those are things that should be discussed within the implementation team. I'm fearful that if we delay this, it doesn't do anything, really, because we're still, there's strong support for the ordinance, we're still moving forward, it's just a question of how we're going to review success or not. So I don't, I don't see any reason to do that. I think the advocates who want to delay, want to delay because they don't like it at all. And this would be disappointing to them, too, to think the intent to delay was to not do anything at all. And I know, I'm looking right at you, you know that to be true. Any delay is not to stop this, it's just simply to add potentially more regulations to it, who knows? A delay could go in any direction. So I think it makes sense to move forward with this. I think the suggestion that was made with regard to the implementation team that we've now set up can address some of the questions that have been raised, as well as adding some of the metrics and data to it during that process. This is not going to be implemented for many, many months. And in the end, I really think this is a minor thing compared to some of the things that have been suggested, many of which I do not support. In the end, I don't think people who have big medical bills or student loans, so they have bad credit, shouldn't be able to get housing. And I definitely don't think people who have been convicted of a crime and served their time and been released into the community shouldn't be able to get housing, because in the end, that's what's going to cause a recidivism problem. And so these are very minor things, I think, that will try to even the playing field for people who have had some trouble in their lives, all of which any of us could have been in that same sort of trouble. So I, as to the question of advice, I don't think that it makes sense to delay this today, but I do think it makes sense to take Councilmember Cunningham's expertise and serious intent with regard to determining the matrix and whether or not we're actually getting the results we want very seriously in the implementation process.
Councilwoman Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Councilmember Goodman, for that feedback. I just want to also just be clear that I am one of the folks who would benefit from this because of the fact this because of the fact that I have had terrible credit for a long time because of student loans and medical debt. And so I get the intention, because I have lived it, and so I support getting folks in more housing, and I appreciate the underlying concern that I'm expressing is the actual outcomes rather than the problem itself. I think we're very clear that this is a problem. I have lived it, I understand, and so I do support the ordinance and look forward to being of support in any way that, to be able to look at the data and the implementation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the ordinance? I don't see any. I don't usually do this, but I do think that since this has taken so much time and effort, I just do want to pause and just thank a few people for their efforts, and first and foremost, Councilwoman Ellison, for being the lead author on this ordinance. It was a pleasure to partner with you in bringing this forward, and I think I see it as one of many things that we will all be doing together in the future. There are, almost every single council member up here is leading on some version of renter protections or support. And so the discussion and debate that we had today on any of the particular details of this ordinance in no way diminishes the strong support of the city council for renter support. And I know that my colleagues who are bringing questions and amendments are, you know, are also leading in many, many ways in order, in order to support renters. So I just want to state that clearly, that it is our job to dig into the details and debate and ask each other hard questions, and I appreciate every council member who's done that, either today or before we got here, to make this ordinance, you know, work for everyone and really reflect all of the different experiences in our city. And no one can do that better than the council member who's representing their own ward. I do, this wouldn't have happened without the renter advocates and activists and renters themselves demanding change. In a ward that's 80% renter, you know, this frankly is a drop in the bucket to what we need to do to support people to be able to afford to live in our community. And I'm proud of the work, and I stand behind it, but I'm a little flabbergasted that it took so much time and effort to pass what I think is a very moderate and small change. And you showed up anyway. I know this is not what you envisioned when we started this conversation, and we appreciate you taking your time, the labor, and the efforts of people who came to share their painful personal stories. You know, folks who could be at work, or who are not being paid to come, like the lobbyists who work for landlords are. Individual people coming to share their personal stories, to help us understand what it's like to be a renter in our community. That is, you know, my thanks really goes beyond words. And, you know, I do also want to just highlight that this was work done by five or six different city departments, and the leadership of the department heads and the staff who worked on this was really important. And we still, I think, face, you know, we face a lot of legitimate questions about any particular policy change, and I don't want to equate the two at all, because I don't think that's what anyone was doing here today. But we also face a lot of just loaded discrimination about renters, about people of color, about people with criminal histories, about people who've had evictions, about people with bad credit, and that shows up time and time again. And all of our staff were professional and able to rely on data and just bring, I think, a really important and well-researched and well-thought-out and incredibly well-vetted ordinance for us today, and we thank you. And I think more than anything I've ever worked on, our policy aides dug in and did research and community engagement, and, you know, had many meetings per week for the last year to bring this ordinance to us today. And I just really want to thank Deanna Pennington and Danny Hans for all of your work above and beyond, in addition to all that you're doing to bring this ordinance to us. Thank you. Council Vice President.
Thank you, Madam President. At the risk of just prolonging this discussion longer, I wanted to just take an opportunity to publicly thank yourself and Councilmember Ellison for your dedicated efforts in bringing this, this ordinance forward. Access to affordable housing is a crisis in this country, to the point that it, it actually rose to discussion level at Democratic debates last night. And so this is a deeply, seemingly intractable problem. This is only one effort towards alleviating that issue, but I am deeply grateful for, for your leadership and your efforts, as well as the advocacy community who have been really reaching out to all of us and expressing their support and concerns about these issues. And so I wanted to just take a moment to publicly state that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this ordinance? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes and no nays.
That carries, and that item is adopted. And that completes, that completes the report of the Housing Policy and Development Committee. Now we move on to the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee, given by the Chair, Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. The Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee brings forward eight items for approval today. The first is the council and mayoral appointments to the Neighborhood and Community Engagement Commission, NCEC. The second is a transfer of 2019 funds from the City Coordinator's Division of Sustainability to the Health Department for the Green Cost Share Program. Item number three is accepting a grant from the Minnesota Department of Health for the Safer Sex Intervention Project. Items number five, item number five is authorizing the submittal of a grant application to the Minnesota Department of Public Safety Office of Justice Programs for the Inspiring Youth Project. Items number five and six are technical amendments with addressing or updating funding streams to appropriate the grant dollars. Item number seven is an appointment to the Workplace Advisory Committee, and the last is a staff direction related to the social cost of carbon staff, excuse me, of carbon, it's a staff direction related to the social cost of carbon. I move approval of all eight items.
Councilmember Cunningham has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes and no nays.
That carries, and those items are adopted. Next, we have the report from the Transportation and Public Works Committee, given by the Chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forward seven items today for full council consideration. Item one is the contract amendment with Global Specialty Contractors, Inc., for the Peville Plaza Construction Project. Item two is the contract amendment with Park Construction Company for the 18th Avenue Northeast Street Reconstruction Project. Three is a memorandum of understanding with Minneapolis Park and Rec for Solid Waste and Recycling Services. Four is a negotiation with Metro Transit for cost participation related to the D-line Bus Rapid Transit Project. Five is the non-governmental tax-exempt parcel street maintenance 2020 assessment designation and setting that public hearing for October 15. Six is the non-governmental tax-exempt parcel street light operation fee 2020 assessment, and that public hearing will also be October 15. And the final item is the 26th Avenue South between East Franklin Avenue and the South Ninth Street Pedestrian Refuge Island and Traffic Signal Project. And that'll be the layout approval and the cooperative agreement to proceed with that project. Madam President, I move all items as submitted.
Councilmember Reich has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes and no nays.
That carries, and those items are adopted. Next, we have the report from the Ways and Means Committee, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Worsami.
Thank you, Madam President. The Ways and Means Committee brings forth 10 items for approval today. Item number one is a legal settlement of claim of Yehia Thau. Item number two is a contract with RBC Global Asset Management Government Portfolio Advisors, T Rose and Associates, and Galleod Capital Management for Investment Management Services. Item number three is a contract amendment with Life Work Services, Inc., for courier services. Item number four is a contract with State of Minnesota for air quality monitoring stations on city property. Item number five is a contract with Be Graceful Bakery and Catering Services for the Public Service Building. Item number six is an agreement with Red Lake Nation for Sprung Structures. Item number seven is a bid for Americans with Disabilities Act, an all-gender restroom improvements project at multiple facilities. Item number eight is a gift acceptance from Kelly Duran to supply Minneapolis 911 response offices with Narcan. Item number nine is a contract amendment with Downtown Improvement District for policing in downtown Minneapolis. And the final item is a contract amendment with Meet Minneapolis for sales and marketing of the Minneapolis Convention Center and Convention and Tourism Services for the city, and I move approval of all 10 items.
Councilmember Worsami has moved the committee report. Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to comment on item number two, and just note that we are extending some of our investment management services to organizations headed by women and people of color, and I think that's a good step forward in addressing some of the racial inequities in our city. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Any further discussions on the committee report? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes and no nays.
That passes, and those items carry. The next is the report from the Zoning and Planning Committee, given by the Chair, Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. The Zoning and Planning Committee will bring forward six items for approval today. The first is the appointment to the Zoning Board of Adjustments. The second is a granting of a variance appeal for the property of 5420 Colfax Avenue South, and also, councilmembers, you'll have some finding of so-facts at your desk. Number three is a granting of a variance appeal at 3406 Benjamin Street Northeast, that also has some findings of fact. Number four is the approval of rezoning at 100 West 46th Street. The fifth is approval of rezoning at 4367 Thomas Avenue North. And the sixth is the approval of a street vacation on 7th Street North between Glenwood Avenue North and Second Avenue North, and I'll move all for approval.
Councilmember Schrader has moved the committee report, including the findings of fact as noted. Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wish to make comment on one of the items.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to note that the variance and the findings of fact for the item on Benjamin Street was not just an adjustment for adjustment's sake, but it actually was a part of a process that was multi-departmental, to do some field testing of ideas that we were contemplating as a city in terms of our energy efficiency goals, that clearly the built environment needs to contribute to, in perhaps a more accelerated and more robust way. And so that field testing would have happened with all the great work of several different departments and people that worked on it. And I just wanted to note that work, particularly the work done by our colleagues, Poor, Havy, and Hanlon, they really dug into this field test as we contemplate greater ideas, and I know the Chair of the committee has been working on that as well. But I just wanted to note that work, and what it does to work that we're contemplating moving forward.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the zoning report? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye on one, three, four, five, and six, and no on two.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes and no nays on all items, with the exception of item number two, where there are 11 ayes and one nay.
Those items carry, and so the report is adopted. The next order of business is the report of special committees, and we have a report from the Executive Committee, presented by Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. The Executive Committee sends forward two collective bargaining agreements. Number one is the Fire Chiefs Unit, and number two is with the Professional Engineers Unit. I move both of these items for referral to the Ways and Means Committee.
Vice President Jenkins has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes and no nays.
Those items carry, and that agenda has been adopted. The next order of business is a notice of ordinance introductions, and we have three items. First, Councilmember Schrader, an aye, give notice to introduce at the next regular meeting the subject matter of an ordinance amending the zoning code to include regulations establishing inclusionary zoning. Second, Councilmember Gordon gives notice to introduce at the next regular meeting the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code related to air pollution, environmental protection, adding a new chapter entitled Environmental Program Fees to unify all related code provisions, ensure compliance with changes in state law, and revise for clarity and accuracy. And third, Councilmember Gordon gives notice to introduce at the next regular meeting the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code to amend provisions for reference proper locations of fees for existing permit types. Are there any questions on any of these introductions? Seeing none, those notices are given and no further action is required. The next order of business is resolutions, and we have the two honorary resolutions presented this morning. First, we are celebrating Latino Heritage Month, and we are declaring September 20 through 29 as the 10 days free from violence. And finally, we are recognizing City Coordinator Nuria Rivera Vandermeide for her years of service to the city of Minneapolis. Any discussion on those? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, say no, those carry and are adopted. That brings us to the order of unfinished business, and we do have the resolution that was sent forward from the Enterprise Committee in the prior cycle related to the creation of a Futuro Latino Empowerment Commission. I'll recognize the Chair, Councilmember Palmasano, for that motion.
Thank you, Madam President. It's with great pride that I get to cue up Councilmember Conno's efforts here to lift up our Latino community's voice by establishing, or some might say re-establishing and reorganizing this commission. We felt it best to partner this action with the celebration of Latino Heritage Month, and I feel it's also a unique way to continue the internal voice of our first Latina city coordinator as she moves on. Our diversity is one of our city's greatest assets, and we are all going to use our voice. I know all of you, and I know we will all use our voice to assert this as policymakers in every way. So I would defer to Councilmember Conno, if she wants to say anything else.
Thank you. Councilmember Conno.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Councilmember Palmasano. So just a quick reminder, this is sort of a refresh. The city of Minneapolis had established a Latino Advisory Board in the 90s, and has since then, you know, the, the energy of the committee has gone up and down. So we are looking to leverage the momentum of our times on this topic to really kick off this effort and trying to bring more energy into it. So I believe that each council member will be able to appoint a Latino resident to the committee, and the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department will be helping to kind of manage and oversee the process. But as soon as those appointments are ready to be made and the process ready to kick off after we approve this today, your offices will be noticed, and you can keep your eye out for people who you might want to bring into the fold and help uplift this community reality. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon. Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye. Aye.
Councilmember Worsami is absent. Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes and no nays.
That carries and the resolution is adopted. This brings us to the order of announcements. Are there any announcements? Councilwoman Ellison.
We've got open streets on West Broadway this weekend so come over to West Broadway this Saturday and this should be a good time. I'll be around. So yeah, just wanted to let everybody know.
Thank you. Anything else? Seeing none, we've concluded all the items on our agenda. We do have a request for closed session to discuss the litigation on our agenda which is a litigation matter of Keith Daniel versus the city of Minneapolis. So I entertain a motion to first adjourn to a meeting of the Minneapolis Community Development Agency Board of Commissioners for considering a bond issuance and then to the closed session in room 315 to discuss the litigation matter. Is our motion?
So moved.
All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed say no. That carries and we are adjourned. That brings us to Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting in the Minneapolis Community Development Agency Board of Commissioners meeting. The clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Reich is absent. Gordon.
Here.
Fletcher.
Here.
Cunningham.
Here.
Ellison.
Here.
Worsami is absent. Jenkins.
Here.
Conno.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Johnson is absent. Palmasano. Present. Chair Goodman.
Present.
There are 10 members present.
10 members are present and we are going to move to adopt the agenda, accept the minutes, and move the major item which is a passage of a resolution authoring a bond issuance for the Minnesota Hillel organization that's doing some improvements on their building. What is the commission's pleasure, Commissioner Allison?
I'd like to move all four items.
All four items have been moved. Are there any comments or questions from anyone on the commission? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Reich is absent. Gordon.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Worsami is absent. Jenkins.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Johnson is absent. Palmasano. Aye. Chair Goodman.
Aye.
There are 10 ayes and no nays.
There are 10 ayes and those items are approved. Seeing no further business before we are adjourned.